Here is the principal of the LG North Elementary School. The start of the school year was a tremendous success. Unsurprisingly, students in grades one to three and their staff entered the school with smiling faces ready to begin the challenges of a new school year. On Wednesday, September 4th, we welcomed our youngest of students, our kindergarteners, to the LG North. Thank you to the PTC for writing positive messages on the blacktop for our first day of school. These positive words really helped set the tone for a great day in the grade school year. Our current enrollment is 273 students. This number includes 66 kindergarteners, dividing into three sections, giving us 22 students in each classroom. In the first grade, we have 61 students, distributed into three sections. Each section has 20 or 21 students. There are 75 students in our second grade, and with some move in and some move out, our class sizes vary in numbers, so we have 24, 25, and 26 in each of the classes. Our third grade class, uh, grade has 71 students, divided again into three classrooms with 23 or 24 students in each room. And our total enrollment is about 10, is exactly 10 students more than it was at this time last year. This past summer, the LG North was a very busy place. Our custodians were doing their usual thing, busy cleaning, stripping and waxing floors, moving classrooms, and getting our school ready for the new school year, while navigating around a window project, which they're absolutely beautiful. However, this took a lot of planning and flexibility on the part of our custodians. And Mr. Trotman and Mr. Washer worked well together, making sure that each day that something got done on their to-do list. It's very apparent that they take great pride in their work, and it reflects in the cleanliness in our building. Additionally, Mrs. Chestnut, Mrs. Brooks, before her retirement, worked diligently in the office, getting everything ready for students and staff to start the school, the school year in September. Safety is always our major concern, whether it's ensuring every student's transportation plan is in place, greeting visitors, or dismissing students. We work together to make sure our young students are safe. Our new Raptor program in the office has been a great addition to our check-in and checkout procedure for visitors and volunteers, as has the second set of doors you might have noticed on your way in. These additional layers of safety have been well received by the public. We've had a tremendous amount of positive feedback, thanking us for working to keep our students and staff safe. The hard work of our custodial staff and our administrative assistant does not go unnoticed. It's very much appreciated by parents, staff, and me. The LGN parent-teacher connection, or PTC, has had a busy start to the school year. In August, they hosted a kindergarten meet-and-greet at the community playground near the middle school, as our playground was unavailable with the window project. Unfortunately, it rained this day, but we had many families brave the elements to meet new friends. On another note, the PTC tried something new this year. They worked with an outside company to provide a box of supplies to start the school year. These boxes were tailor-made to meet the need of each grade level, and the items included were handpicked by staff. Many families took advantage of this program, saving time running to stores to pick up the needed supplies. Our teachers are very appreciative to get so many consumables to start the school year. The LGN already participated in its annual Booster-Thon fundraiser on October 11th. This is the biggest fundraiser of our, of the school year. This event surpassed our $15,000 goal by raising $22,533. So this is a huge success. Thank you to everyone near and far who donated money and earned time to this event. The PTC also hosted two after-school programs in October. The programs were the On the Bar Dance and Personal Best Karate. Many students took advantage of this low-cost enrichment program after school. Additionally, the PTC sponsored the third-grade field trip to Plymouth Plantation on October 18th, and continues to support classrooms. They've already approved several teacher requests for supplies and materials for individual teachers. The students and staff would like to thank the PTC for their hard work and continued support. This year, we have several new staff members and many transfers to the LG North, and I'm pleased to announce who they are. The transfers are Mrs. Tracy Chestnut, who is our new administrative assistant. She comes from the J.C. Somney School, where she was the assistant, administrative assistant. Mr. Joseph Trotman is our new head custodian, and he came to us from the middle school, where he was the head custodian there. Mrs. Tracy Blanchett, our school adjustment counselor, came from the Hay. She was also the school adjustment counselor there. Ms. Jac, Jacqueline, and I'm gonna hopefully-
Born Asian.
Can you say?
Born Asian.
Born Asian. Adding time to her schedule, she's an SLPA, and she works one and a half days a week here at the LG. Mrs. Gia Sunderland was our Title One teacher, and now she's the district readings specialist and literacy coach. Mrs. Kimberly Aranjow was promoted to our new head cook, and Ms. Linda May Doherty returned to the kitchen as an assistant. We have five new staff members who joined our team. Ms. Sarah Johnson is a special educator in one of our best programs. Ms. Johnson's unable to attend tonight, her son's being abducted into the National Honor Society, so she sends along her apologies. However, I did want to tell you a little bit about her. She's been teaching for nine years. Her previous experience has been working with kindergarten to grade two students with multiple disabilities. She recently has been working in a preschool special classroom in two sub-separate areas. Ms. Johnson received a bachelor's degree from UMass Boston and her master's from Bay Path College. A little-known fact about her is that she has 16-year-old twins, a boy and a girl, and is an avid DIYer. Ms. Casey Russo is our new team chair. She's also unable to join us. She has parent-teacher conferences for her son, one of her sons today, so she spent, sends along her apologies. Ms. Russo comes to us from the Guild for Human Services. She's been working in the field for almost 20 years. It shocked her when she said it to me. She received her bachelor's degree in intensive special education from Bridgewater State University. She attended Cambridge College to receive her master's degree in moderate special education, pre-K to eight, and to receive her CAGs in special education administration. Ms. Russo has taught students from pre-K to age 22. A fun fact about her is that she has two boys ages 13 and 14, and two dogs. Ms. Emily Duchamp is our new integrated special educator. She had a scheduling conflict, and sends her apologies along. Ms. Duchamp received her bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in special education from Bridgewater State University. She started her career at Fall River. For the past two years, she's been a K2 special education inclusion teacher and has now come to Norton. A fun fact about Ms. Duchamp is that she's the youngest of five children and has an identical twin sister. Sandy Miranda and Emily Brogan are new paraprofessionals in our best program. Both come to us with experience working with students with, or children with ASD diagnoses. I wish all of our new, um, staff members a successful school year, and I thank you for coming. It's a pleasure to host you tonight.
No questions, but the building does look amazing, doesn't it?
Yeah, obviously does.
Oh, really nice. So different. I drove by the other day, and it couldn't do it without the inside. I just changed the inside, too. It's nice. It's beautiful.
Since I have students in the room in the high school, I might as well tell you two more bathrooms are gonna be opened up tomorrow. My life for the last 24 hours. It's a good thing, because we've had some really good students appropriately come forward and ask for some flexibility and some input, so thank you to those students who have done that on behalf of the student body, and thank you to, uh, Mr. Dollman, and his benefit for your help in making this work. We'll have some new ideas coming forth to the school committee in the near future. Tonight, probably one of the nicest, I love the whole side of the room, because I get to present to not only the community, but to the school committee, students that excel for numerous reasons, not only athletically, specifically within engraving their classroom, and what many of the counselors and teachers said to me, are committed to just being good young people who make good choices. So congratulations to the family, because it gets them to raise great kids. We're giving out four awards tonight, like we do every year. Two for the National Development Council, one from the Mass Association, two superintendent's and a fourth one, which is the local award for the superintendent. So I get to meet with all four students, which was kinda cool, where you can talk for five, six minutes and get all their information, they get to tell me a little bit about themselves. So tonight, I'm ready and prepared to provide these awards. We'll have you come up, as I get your name, we'll talk a little bit about you before you come up, and then we'll take some pictures. Family's a welcome for us, if you've done this before, and we'll go from there. So congratulations to all involved. The first award goes to Declan Diesel. Declan is a ded- Come on up. And then we'll present to Declan's a dedicated, accomplished, humble, young man. We describe Declan as a goal-oriented, proud, competitive, and dedicated young man who's driven to do his best. He exemplifies personal responsibility and is an outstanding role model. He's the product of family that values morals and goodness. Declan is the process, in the process of completing a challenging course load at Norton High. He has taken a variety of honors, AP courses, and Excel beneath. He has earned a 4.5 GPA while balancing academics, athletics, and community involvement. His academic successes earn him membership in the National History, English, Math, Science, and French Honor societies. He also is awarded the President's Academic Excellence Award in French for the past three years, and the President's Academic Excellence Award in Science during his sophomore year. Throughout his time at NHS, Declan has maintained a heavy course load and still has been able to excel on the NHS soccer team. Congrats, by the way. Bringing home now. Come on. And in both winter and spring track, which, congratulations, and that you guys do well, too. Declan has volunteered his time with the Little Whiffles organization, has taken on a leadership role for the past three years, while teaching religious ed classes at St. Mary's. And talking to Declan, the greatest things in some of the schools, he's looking at potential pre-med, unless it changes since then, sometimes it does. He's looking at UVM, NC, Virginia, Holy Claus, Davidson, PC, and BC. That's kinda the big picture that we have. So I present to you tonight, the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning, presented to Declan Diesel by the Superintendent Schools. Put it on the front side. Wish I was taller. Family wanna come up?
I'm sure.
We'll have you go against this. Congratulations, Mom. Thank you very much. Second award presented tonight is to this Vicki Tron. So this is another young lady that I get to meet a little bit the other day. No matter the subject, Vicki has been determined to be successful since entering high school. She is the value determining of her class ranking first out of 180 students. She is a natural born leader and has taken on numerous roles that have highlighted her abilities. While excelling academically, she has prioritized being well-rounded in her involvement in clubs, sports, and community service opportunities. Academically, she has been the recipient of many school-based awards, most notably the Presidential Excellence Awards for History in 17 and 19, the Presidential Awards for Math in 18 and 19, and the Presidential Excellence Award for History in 19. Presidential Excellence Award for Science in 19, and Presidential Excellence Award for English in 19. Vicki has been on the varsity girls' tennis team for every year of high school and was selected to be the team's captain for 2020, after a very successful season last year. I did follow you. During her sophomore and junior year on the team, she was awarded MVP. She's a member of the National Honor Society, as well as school-based honor societies such as math, science, and English and history. She holds the position of president of the Math Honor Society and is the vice president of Science Honor Society. For the past three years, Vicki has also been the treasurer of her class council. She is thinking about math for pre-med, and she's applied to Tufts, UMass, and Boston College. Tonight, I present to you Vicki Tron, the award of the Superintendent's Local Award of Excellence. Congratulations. Family? If you'd like to come. As you do this profession. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Let's mic brush it to bring up Rilin Gilbert this time. Alrighty. Always puts forth incredible effort in academics and makes her schoolwork a priority. This is demonstrated through her impressive GPA, class rank of two, and the class inconsistent high honor roll status. Rilin continues to challenge herself in her senior year with a demanding course load. This year, she has enrolled in three AP courses in addition to her honor's level courses. She's a respected member of six honor, national honor societies, and probably serves as the president of the school's Science Honor Society, as well as VP of the Math Honor Society. She's a natural leader. She's the vice president of the senior class, which takes up a great deal of her time and energy. With this position comes a lot of responsibility and planning, everything from hallway decorating to spirit weeks proms, et cetera. She's also captain of the school's volleyball team, where she helps with organizing practices, summer leagues, and must maintain frequent communication with coaches and players. She's a wonderful bond with her teammates, which helps in contributing to the sense of community and belonging at NHS. In addition to volleyball, she dedicates her time to part-time job at LLV, volunteering at El Baroy, and acting as a vice president of public relations for the school's Hallie Deman Decker Club. She's been the, uh, Rilin has shown that she is incredibly driven student with a fire for learning. Her teachers note her as being confident, diligent, and optimistic, one of three great skills. In the future, she hopes to further explore her interest in science by possibly exploring a career in lab science or the vet field. And we're confident that she will continue to do wonderful things in college and beyond. She's thinking of neuroscience, maybe vet, pre-med, that was our discussion. BC, PC, Villanova, Duke, and William &amp; Mary are where she's applying.
load, four years of volleyball, resulting in captaincy in her senior year, incredible involvement within the community, all while maintaining consistent honor roll throughout
So congratulations to- And Pam?
her high school.
Come on. Sorry.
She's taken advantage of every opportunity possible to prepare herself for the rigorous
And lastly, if I could have Ms. Caroline Daly to come up.
journey of nursing programs. Perhaps her most impressive feat has been achieving all required hours of coursework to become a certified nursing assistant through her participation in a medical mission trip to Central America known as the Hands and Feet Mission Group. Deeply passionate about access to healthcare in foreign countries, this experience further ignited her passion for helping others, especially women. Caroline's service to the community also includes female empowerment within her own community. She has worked with the Norton Police Department to bring women self-defense training to our school district. In addition to self-defense training, Caroline has also assisted local organizations known as the New Hope to bring attention and awareness to domestic and sexual violence survivors. On top of that, she has won the annual Massachusetts Lane Youth Speech Competition last year, which highlighted her excellent communication skills and self-confidence. She has a driven force focused in generously, generous personality, which allows her to achieve great things. She's thinking of nursing, which is a great connection to what she's already done, and she's an early action at Georgetown, and also applying at BC, NU, Simmons Fairfield, UVM, Villanova, UPenn, UMass. Ladies and gentlemen, Caroline Daly is a certificate of academic excellence from the Superintendent's Association.
Pam? Ooh, no pressure on you, huh? Excellent. Congratulations. And if I could have the four students to come up today. Why don't you join us representing the high school, that the selection do come to the principal's assistant, principal, and Mrs. Cersei's office, the teacher's office. We'll fly this way a little bit. Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations.
It's extremely impressive, and we highly appreciate this. All right, we're onto the other. Oh, yes, yes. Students and parents, you do not have to say it the rest of it, unless you wanna learn it. But this is really-
Unless you wanna learn it on the screen. Well, it's just, it's the best night of the year for me every single day. I still get the shivers when I come up here every year to present these awards to kids and the difficulty it is to select students, not only because they're great academically, but everything else that goes with it. So congratulations to Norton Public Schools for being part of that process. As you know, first of all, I'd like to bring up John Perry from Gale Associates, who's been our, our hired consultant group to work with us. Been fantastic, by the way. Him and his team have been just really working hard with us. I did give you a little bit of a snapshot, made out that we can talk a little bit, but before we did that, I just wanted to have John talk just a few minutes about the process, how he's done it elsewhere, what he's been doing for us, and then we'll go through some of the, uh, the stuff that we have here. As you know, we're already down to a few options only, but I think it's important for us, since especially being recorded again, that the public has it, and then I'll talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you. Again, my name is John Perry. I'm from Gale Associates. So we're an engineering and architectural company based out of Weymouth, and we have a focus on design of athletic complexes. We've been doing that for about, we've been in business for like 55 years, we've been doing athletic design for like 20, 25 years now. We've designed probably 200 or so in Massachusetts, a lot in New England over that period of time. So the process that we have been involved with here in Norton so far has been really the initial stages of planning, which is typically where we start with any project, the master planning stage essentially. So we're doing some very conceptual planning and cost estimating. We've gone through seven or eight probably different renditions at this point. They're all similar to each other with different nuances to it. But again, at this level, it's really kind of like high-level, you know, planning. And then if the project, you know, if the school committee and then others from the town, the committee votes, need to approve the process, if that happens, then we would go down the line of actually designing and engineering it, you know, doing a survey and geotechnical engineering, and actual stormwater planning, and then permitting through all the different committees and commissions in town. We then, you know, prepare construction-level drawings, put out a bid for contractors. We don't have to build anything, we're just the engineers, but we stay on board through construction to kind of manage that process, to make sure that what was designed is actually being built, and to, you know, track contractor's schedule and things of this nature. So, I mean, we're really way back at the beginning of those stages now. Do you want me to go through any of the plans?
No, I'll put them up, and then we can work off each other on what took place. I think it's important for the committee to, and you have all of these, but I brought these along, you've seen A, B, C, and E already. As you know, the original process started with the idea that the high school football field would go through just a, if you will, an upgrade, but it would not be turned into turf, and just an upgrade up to track, but it would be maintaining the same six-lane track. But then we would pick up everything behind where the current softball field is over by the Yell for my office area, in which teams mostly practice and go into JV baseball field. That would actually become the beginning of the complex going this way. All turf, all lit, tennis courts, with the pitfield being a grass field. So that was option one, and that came in at an estimate of 9.3, or option A, at 9.3 million dollar estimate. When you flip to B, it is the same exact idea, except the baseball diamond goes the other way. And if you look at that, it brings the cost down slightly to about 9.2 million dollars from our original discussions. Are you with me? C and D that you have as well, and you've seen, take the whole idea, and these are all put together by Gale in terms of the conversations. Six-lane tracks, synthetic turf reconstruction at the high school. So now you do, you do have the turf field, but you haven't changed the track, some concerns about that, as you know. You still have the complex here, but then we provided to the town the potential for the senior center to go where the baseball diamond is, which would require that a new multipurpose baseball diamond goes where the current turf field goes, and the tennis courts would be moved into in between the senior center and the, and the, uh, the complex, if you will. And that came in at a little over $10 million. I do not think that this, that options A, B, and C are true options right now. Some of it's because I know where the school committee already stands in terms of not doing something with the high school baseball, uh, football field, and two, I think that the current situation with the building committee and using the baseball diamond for the senior center is, or community center is not a true option at this point. So we moved to option D, an estimate of 9.5 million. This now enters the eight-lane track with the synthetic field construction at the high school, the synthetic turf field behind the Yell softball-baseball, an amenities building, which is talked about throughout, uncovered pavilion, tennis courts, additional parking, and a natural grass field construction at the, at the pit. So again, this doesn't become turf, because now the baseball diamond isn't being looked at either. So this brings your cost down slightly, but not as much as maybe you would think. And then we got, then the feedback from you folks, which led to a little bit of the D, then went to a whole nother level when the athletic field complex committee met. When that group got together, then things really started to spin in terms of where we wanted to go and what it should look like. So option E is the eight-lane track, synthetic turf field construction, so that's, that continues. Synthetic turf, baseball field, softball field here, but there are no tennis courts that go with this project, and the pitfield stays as the pitfield. And that actually becomes about a $7.2 million cost. And again, this was looking at economics and looking at the bare minimum, not looking at long-term. This is more of a short-term solution, if you look at this process. And then John and his gang got even more creative. I'm only showing F, I think it's one, and there's F2 because it's just a slight change. F1 is the eight-lane track, synthetic turf field at the high school, synthetic turf field, multipurpose field in the back, synthetic baseball field here, where you just take the new, the current baseball field, and it creates basically a new baseball field with a multipurpose field in the outfield, continues here, and tennis courts, but the pit is where it is. And there are no lights on, on this side here. It's just lighting from here over. And no, no lighting on the, on the baseball diamond either. F2-
Can I just, you said no lighting, so just on the tennis courts or on the-
It would be this, no, no tennis court lights and no lights on the synthetic baseball, baseball field. So no lights here, no lights here. And then we were, then we were asked, how about lighting, which led us to F2, which is not pictured here, but is down below. It's all of F1 with the lights, and that comes in at 10.4 million. So it's about $1.2 million worth of lighting that we need to, to take place.
So everything is lit in F2?
Correct. Double-checking. Okay. So I did my homework. I've been, I've been practicing this for, I can't tell you how many days, because so many options going on. So this came to, looking at all of that, that, that came to really what became the final discussion that came out of the athletic group, which was, why don't we look at the eight-lane track with the synthetic turf field of construction at the high school, with a synthetic turf field, multipurpose softball-baseball, behind the Yell continuation? We keep the tennis courts with no lights at, at all. The synthetic turf field, pitfield, would be synthetic, but that would also have no lights. So you're going from tennis courts over, new, but no lighting, and then this way, it's all lit. That doesn't change, because it's no longer synthetic, but that all has enlightened as well. And that comes in at an estimate of 8.6 million. For this option, there is a little bit of a curve ball. We haven't been told no to. I do think it's- So option E is the eight-lane track, synthetic turf field construction, so that continues. Synthetic turf, baseball field, softball field here, but there are no tennis courts that go with this project, and the pitfield stays as the pitfield. And that actually becomes about a $7.2 million cost. And again, this was looking at economics and looking at the bare minimum, not looking at long-term. This is more of a short-term solution if you look at this process. And then John and his gang got even more creative. I'm only showing F, I think it's one, and there's F2 because it's just a slight change. F1 is the eight-lane track, synthetic turf field at the high school, synthetic turf field, multipurpose field in the back, synthetic baseball field here, where just take the new, the current baseball field, and it creates basically a new baseball field with a multipurpose field in the outfield, continues here, and tennis courts, but the pit is where it is. And there are no lights on this side here. It's just lighting from here and over. And no, no lighting on the, on the baseball diamond either. F2.
Can I just, you said no lighting, so just on the tennis courts or on the?
It would be this, no tennis court lights and no lights on the synthetic baseball, baseball field. So no lights here, no lights here. And then we were, then we were asked, how about lighting, which led us to F2, which is not pictured here, but is down below. It's all of F1 with the lights, and that comes in at 10.4 million. So it's about $1.2 million worth of lighting that we need to, to take place.
So everything is lit in F2?
Correct. Let me double check. Okay, so I did my homework. I've been practicing this for, I can't tell you how many days because so many options going on. So this came to, looking at all of that, that, that came to really what became the final discussion that came out of the athletic group, which was, why don't we look at the eight-lane track with the synthetic turf field of construction at the high school, with the synthetic turf field, multipurpose softball, baseball, behind the Yell continuation? We keep the tennis courts with no lights at, at all. The synthetic turf field, pitfield would be synthetic, but that would also have no lights. So you're going from tennis courts over new, but no lighting, and then this way it's all lit. That doesn't change because it's no longer synthetic, but that all has enlightened as well. And that comes in at an estimate of 8.6 million. For this option, there is a little bit of a curve ball. We haven't been told no to. I do think it's going in that direction, but that is, we have offered the idea that the pitfield would not be ours, it would actually be the new home of the senior community center. But I'm not sure that that's going to happen either. So this plan just basically is a school department plan. If that were to happen, the big question we have to decide internally is, do we have to shift back to the baseball field with multipurpose, or can we accept giving up this field? Because currently it's basically used as only a practice field in some JV games. So that's kind of how that, that looks. It keeps that open for that discussion. Of course, the cost with no turf field, it would bring that down by about, I think it's about $1,083,000, somewhere in that ballpark. I'll be presenting Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 20th at 7:00 PM. I have the staff at the high school on Monday after school, and then I have two community meetings on the 20th of November and the 9th of December. We have to make a change of the date, and the committee will have recommendations for January.
So I just have a couple of questions.
Yep.
I'm trying to get all of this together here. So between D and G, what am I missing?
D has additional parking from G. One is grass, one is turf. D has additional parking with a natural grass field, and you said?
The pit is natural grass.
Right. We've had some questions about rentals in terms of numbers. We've seen numbers as low as $50,000 and as high as $200,000. It all depends on who's asking. A lot of the communities, some of the communities are giving up as, as a community field, they're giving up charging the local community teams, they're asking for donations and that type of stuff, but there's no real charge unless they maybe have to open up a building, let's say, then they would be custodial. Otherwise, as you know, with all of these designs, we've actually are putting in portals because we don't want to have fixed bathrooms with keys and stuff.
The option that you mentioned last week, which would be taking your current baseball field, relinquishing the pitfield altogether, taking your current baseball field and making that a baseball field slash multi, that's about 9.6 million?
If you go with F, there's an F1 and an F2, so F1.
No, this is G.
Oh, you're going with G?
This is the G event.
So it's this last one you talked about?
So taking G.
Right.
At the very end, you said that there was another option or another thought that we might take G and relinquish the pitfield altogether and instead have a baseball field with a multipurpose field, a synthetic.
Here.
It's really F2 without, without lights on tennis.
Right, so it's just take the lights off the tennis?
Pretty much.
So it's pretty much F2, which would be all of F1 and then add the lights. It's about 10, 10.4 million.
Well, I think if we relinquish the pit, that we don't do anything in this plan to the baseball field currently.
Right, so the question, the question that we have to do internally, right, so the question we have to do internally is if we give up the pit completely, we have no field, can we absorb that into the rest of the complex? Yes or no? And that's something that I've asked Aaron to take a look at in terms of our practice sessions, playing sessions, so on. Most of our community groups don't use it until after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night, and with lights, they could actually come in at 7:00 o'clock.
So this is, all right, so how much do you think is available?
The difference between the, the F1 and F2 right now, which is, the original F1 had everything with the tennis courts and the synthetic baseball, multipurpose field with no lights. Adding the lights adds about one.
What's our, what's our, 10, 1?
10.4.
So in the event we have a plan to report without anything for the tennis courts at this location, what do we have to do with those tax courts?
We're probably, in talking to Wade and to Aaron, we're probably looking at a resurfacing of that entire area. But don't forget that the building committee is also looking at that site where the old Campbell house used to be, and the potential of having discussions with us that if a tennis court is at the high school, then could that be used potentially for parking for their need, if in fact there's enough space to build there with or without touching the playground, which again is not any of my business. So what we're trying to do here is kind of get us to a point where we have two roads that the committee feels is proper, feels good about. Could be an A and a B if you want to, there's always an A and a B, I think, but at least two roads that you feel comfortable about because of the impact of the discussions we've had, and they've only been discussions about, does the building committee want anything to do with the school department? And by want, I don't mean in a negative way, I mean that we've said, do you want to take a look at these options or not?
So, I don't know if you guys have that. So if, if we do nothing to our current fields in the state that they're in, what kind of potential are we looking at for safety of our athletes, safety of our public? I mean, are we looking at, at some point, these fields are unplayable, we don't have any home teams?
Yeah, I'm worried about a couple of things. I'm worried about travel costs because we're going to start to travel more than we do for lacrosse, for example, in the spring, having to split equally boys' games at home, having to take a look at talking to Wheaton, which is a cost for every game, rightfully so, I mean, they have to cover their costs as well. My concern is actually Title IX with that is a concern, but my biggest concern is practice. Where do we practice? Because behind my office area where we are, which is from the, from that JV baseball field, from just over from the pitfield all the way to where the entrance of the high school is, that is an old stumping ground. It is this. It's difficult. The teams are rotating in order to be able to practice. If you go to the pitfield and it rains, it's a mud pit. And as you know, because I received them, Aaron received them, we got the complaints, you know, how could we be out there? So those are the type of things that, that we have to worry about. Our fields are, that if we go with, for example, just, just do natural, say, let's just do natural fields, it's a bigger cost than this is going to be. Because some of those areas have still no drainage at all. You're going to have to get water. There's, I mean, it's either that or you're just putting in money to put down seed and dry it out a year later. And there's a concurrent uptake, uptake, which we see is the biggest problem with the high school football field. So that's.
I think, so what you just mentioned right there has made a little concern for option D and E. D because we're keeping a natural grass, right? So I think that's something that we just need to take off. I mean, we're looking at that drawing at 9.5 million with natural grass. I think I'd rather go with one of the F, you know, for 9.2. So for me, I think I, option D is off the table for me. And E, I know we talked about it at our last meeting, having the three, three fields, so for rental possibilities. And Aaron, I appreciate you getting that information to us because I think what we can get in rentals is going to be huge to help, you know, put to help for maintenance and for helping to do something with our athletic fees possibly. So I just don't know that E is really an option like we talked about at our last meeting. So to me, I'm looking at the two F options and the G.
Plus E is more about tennis courts. I mean, we should add tennis courts. We have a tennis team.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, if I was to say, if you put me on the spot tonight, you said, give me a recommendation, and I say that A, B, C, D are off the table. I think the concern with E, F1, F2, and G is, we may be able, I mean, we've got to remember, these folks who are the professionals of the field, for lack of a better word, have a reputation of providing conservative cost estimates. They have a very good reputation with that. What does that mean? They're looking at, you know, if all of a sudden, you know, things are going in a different direction economically, do things go up in price? So we've, we've got some great contingency in this project right now, but when the project goes out, these numbers could be a million less, a 500,000 more. I think, we don't know. I know that you worked in one project locally where you guys gave an estimate and it came in a significant amount less to the community.
So just to reiterate again, I know, I apologize because you already said this, but the F1, there's no lights on the tennis courts?
Correct.
And no lights on the multipurpose that's right to the left of it?
No, it would be the lights on the multipurpose baseball field that you put back in play.
So no lights where the current baseball field is right now?
Correct, so it'd become, it'd become a multipurpose field baseball field, but there would not be baseball lights on that field.
Right, because there's lights on the field, that's the, the big field, the two baseball and softball.
Right. The other discussion here is, there is a, there is some significant debate about baseball and going to turf. I mean, some people love it, some people are still trying to figure out if they like it. The other issue is, and it just happens, we haven't touched the softball field, what's called the varsity softball field at all, but that doesn't mean that the varsity team can't be playing on the synthetic field. So you have that. So in other words, even though this, even though this would be just a regular field, don't forget you've got a baseball field going on right here that is synthetic and is lit. So your JV could be playing here in the field that you haven't spent any money on while your varsity is actually now playing here. So a rainy day, the story becomes, if it rains in the morning, it becomes a different discussion for us in the afternoon, so we can move the game, and it's lit.
So that one, again, that's G?
That's G, yes.
And it's 8.6, what is it not?
This one has, it has the. It doesn't have the parking because we feel that the walkway, that's all set, I mean, people have to walk to a parking area, it is what it is, I don't, I don't think the cost connects well. It has no lights on the tennis courts, and it has no lights on the synthetic turf field here. So everything, everything here over has, is not lit.
Tennis in the pits.
Correct.
But what do we realistically, I'm sorry, what sports do we realistically need lights on?
Right, that's what I asked you.
Well, you, you, you can move some lacrosse to at night, there's no doubt about that. We do that now. Boys and girls soccer, football, you could potentially do baseball at night, but you don't see as much baseball at night. I'll defer to you, Aaron, because you know the schedule.
Yeah, so the towns that have lights, Norwood, Birmingham, Devon like to play night games.
Right.
So football, soccer, lacrosse?
Baseball, softball.
No, probably the ones that are on the fields.
Right.
So lacrosse is a stretch.
Yep.
Football already has its own field, and soccer has?
Soccer has a combination of, of the, of the football field and other fields. We can alternate boys and girls, varsity games, we can have both games on at the same time.
Tennis technically plays, but it's a stretch.
No, tennis is after school, done by, and in the spring, it's late up until 8:00 o'clock.
A lot of communities like the lights also for the community too. You could have, if you go out in the community, um, forget, play tennis, you know, the fall gets dark, you know, 5:30, 6:00. As well as practices, not just for games with the lighted fields. You know, I think the games, game days probably would be easier than the practices, if you've got away teams, home teams, which we find, but on days where it's just practices and every sport's out there practicing all at once, finding space for everyone all at the same time, you generally, you run the stack of practices. And then if you also have communities up there, you have all your high school teams practice, they have teams come in, teams come in after that, or have rentals, practice and things like that. The lights, the lights just kind of allow you to schedule fields in that sort of way.
So they, they, they don't happen at night, but that doesn't mean that they can't happen at night, right? Because it gives flexibility to what's going on after school academically for students besides just having to go to practice.
I think, yeah, and I just think that, and it wasn't my fault, I'd say, yeah, fine, tell me for that, that's right, but this town is not getting that.
Right.
They're going to, they're going to look at the cost of this and the issue.
And that's, and that's the reason why I still think E is in play, F1, F2, and I would say the F without the lights and G. G has, G takes.
The one with the grass, I don't think it'd be.
Yeah, again, that's, it's going to be your call before it goes forward.
Oh, there's no tennis courts here, I don't think anybody cares.
I'm looking at G and F1. I think it's between those two, and it really depends on where, what the senior center, you know, what they're, what they're looking at.
So that I want you in a.
F1, F1 is if the senior center doesn't decide to use the pitfield. I mean, after they just cleared all the space in the middle school.
Yeah, again, we, we don't, what, as you know, Sherri, because you've been at the table this, this day, one, because you're on both committees, my goal has always been, and I think your goal, and I don't want to speak for you, has always been, let's keep our options open and be partners. That's all it's been. If we're not partners, that's fine. We, we get it, we understand it. But if somebody was looking for land that was at no cost, we'd provide two options on school premises that both have issues according to the senior center, which I understand, or two, if they look at the Campbell and there's tennis courts being built. I have to tell you, the tennis courts are being used a lot more today than they, than they were five or six years ago, or seven years ago now when I got them. So that, that can speak to a lot of different things. The interest in exercise, because it's one of those sports where you can exercise and all that. The idea of two people just going out, let's go hit the ball around, right? You don't have to have 60 people to, to play a good game. And I think the third part is your community, your, your, your older community. You know, you can use a tennis court for pickleball.
I'd like to use them in that way.
Yeah.
They are definitely being used.
And I think it's important for the committee to find out, the people who come to the meetings, pro or con, or in the middle, we, 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 we don't have an outlet at town meeting to present these things unless it's going for a final vote, which I do think is something that should be, I think when town meeting gives you money for a report, you should be having to report back on what your report findings were before you go out and ask for money, but that's not the way we do it. That's not a knock, that's just, I think, a process. Because now the very people who said yes to $20,000 for a study really don't get to see anything until potentially the day they vote, unless they come out for yet another forum, so. So you have, before you, we're not asking for a vote tonight. John and his guys are fantastic, his team, I should say, are fantastic. It's a phone call, can you change this and that? Within seven business days, we get everything blown up, sent to us and emailed to us, so.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah?
When you're going forward with your showings, it would be helpful just to make if the fields that were synthetic versus grass, not just the ones that are.
Or marked differently?
Were actually different colors, and if there was some kind of clear, doesn't taste of light, honestly, these guys are athletic, they always have that on their sight. I can't really put it on there. So even with my varsity, it's on yourself. It'd be helpful to see it kind of a little clearer, if it's some kind of color.
Probably hard on the, a little of my 17s too, they're really kind of meant for the large boards here. There's a little chart. A little chart on the bottom.
And that's what it looks like. You've got a better lighting. Oh, wow! But just, just a thought, just a change.
Yeah, yeah, and once we nail down the actual version, we'll provide a nice looking color plan that will indeed.
It's helpful to see the version.
Yeah, so when I do the presentations, I'm going to have these in the room, but I'm actually going to be blowing it up technology-wise on the screen, so I think you'll also be able, because I can use the pointer and go through and say, da, 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 da. I think it'll make it easier. And then we'll get into all the color schemes and stuff as you folks, you know, maybe I can even talk them into the last final two choices, having that done. Okay? I want to thank John and Gail, fantastic group to work with, highly recommend them, flexible, so John, thank you. Thank you.
And if that three of you on this were moving this time?
The, the two presentations, yeah, one of the presentations, we're going to move from the 18th to the, and keep the 20th and then December 9th. We've been publicizing that.
The 20th and then?
The 20th and then the 9th of December. That's on.
How are we going on? This is December, we all have school to do. Good evening, everyone. So my, I have for you two drafts of a 2020, 2021 school calendar. You will come plain notice first off, if the calendar has a little bit of a different look, I'm going to help to change that for us. So one of the challenges with the 2020, 21 school year is the lateness of Labor Day. Labor Day is on fall until Monday, September 7th, which is basically the latest September date. So we have two different options here for you to work around at the late Labor Day start. Draft one, draft version one would have our staff come back on Monday, August 31st. They would return for one day of a welcome back day. And then our students in grades one through 12 would return the following day, which would be Tuesday, September 1st. They would come to school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Our kindergarten would start on Wednesday, that'd be, we'd have a beginning one day later. And they would have two. And they would have two, three days depending on the grade level of school coming in, getting settled, learning the classroom routines, building relationships, and then we would have a long weekend for the Labor Day holiday. All staff and students would be off on Friday, September fourth, as well as Monday, September seventh. And we would just kick right into high gear when we came back on Tuesday, the eighth. That version, in that version, we would not have our traditional professional development day before the start of the school year, which we have come to love, I'll be honest. So that would be something that would be a transition for us, however, because it's a presidential election year, we would have that professional development day instead on Tuesday, November third. We would be closer to students, we would be open for staff, and that would help us with the flow of traffic and voting and children and so forth. In version one, our last day of school would be June, Tuesday the fifteenth, and the five snow days would be Tuesday, the twenty-second. Draft two of the calendar has a more traditional start for what we do. Typically, our staff comes back on the Tuesday before Labor Day for a welcome back day, then the following day would be a professional development day, with students returning on Tuesday, the eighth. Students Tuesday, the eighth, with the grades one to twelve, kindergarten on Wednesday, little lancers on the tenth. With that, election day would still be closed, would not be professional development day, staff and students would be off. And the reason for that is because we really do believe that we're going to see a huge turnout for the presidential election in two thousand twenty, and it just kind of will alleviate some of those challenges. With this, the last day of school would be Friday, June eighteenth, and the five snow days would be Friday, June twenty-second, which I don't know if anyone else can turn, but I really enjoyed getting out on June fourteenth lunch here. It was amazing, I couldn't believe it was July first, we had already been off for two weeks. So those are just two options for you, we're not asking you to vote on either of those things tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, I love those two options. Goodness.
So version one?
Yeah. I'm watching you, and I'm like, what's it gonna say?
And Sherri noticed this, I mean, the last day of school is the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yet to the right, it does make it the tenth.
Oh, sorry, okay, so that was an error on our part, I apologize. Thanks, Sherri, I can't.
Remember, the school calendar is a chosen school committee, so the school committee wishes to look at other options than just my text gen with what we think the draft should be. This is a, this is a discussion that's going to be taking wide, more debate this year than ever, because A, people really liked early last year, statewide, almost all is set up early, but the second part is that Labor Day is so darn late this coming year, it's every about seven years, I think that it's, it's opposite and a little late this year.
And the way that our contract currently reads as well, just so everyone is aware, that the teachers cannot report back prior to the Monday before that Labor Day start. Today would be coming back really the earliest that they are allowed for a contract, and the Friday before Labor Day is also a contractual item in our current contract.
So with option two?
Yeah.
If we have a real bad winter, we could be in some trouble towards the end of the year.
Yeah, because we all...
Yes, certainly.
Maxed out at June thirtieth, right?
Yeah. So five schools, five snow days, those tend to bring you right to the twentieth, that is a Friday, I think, wasn't last year, but do you believe the year before we had six snow days?
I think it's not inconceivable.
It is not inconceivable.
The other part is that if the, if we have a winter this year, we're slated to get out June, uh...
Gosh.
It's early.
It's early, and it's just practically...
Which might make the discussions about not going to come back to Labor Day a little less for some families, just because, you know, getting out early this year, we, we don't have families that it's gonna be an issue for, but you know what? If you decide tomorrow that you can get out of school application, then all I say, I thought of my mind, I think it's a great idea, but good for parents.
We are currently slated for, for this school year to get out on Friday, June twelfth, no snow day. And I...
And we didn't say...
But no snow days, wait, hoping for no snow days, but unfortunately, seniors usually can't go there every day.
Jen, has there been any discussion, so other school districts are kind of looking at changing the vacation schedule, so?
Internally, we've had a lot of conversations about it, especially in the year, a few years ago, we had basically, we didn't come to work on a Monday, and it was just for the entire month of January, and we had, we had February break, it seemed, almost as if you didn't deserve the February vacation, because you hadn't been to school at all for those last few weeks. The biggest challenge when looking at changing the school vacation is really, we're going to eliminate February, April, or March break, it does really impact our families, number one, our families that are kind of planning that, people may be educators of other districts, or art teachers that have students in other districts, it almost needs to be a more of a regional decision, because it just, it needs to really affect our families.
Just to piggyback, the districts that have tried it have done it for a year, and what they've run into is attendance issues for staff and attendance issues for students, which then, the attendance issue for students is now an accountability factor.
It is.
Even if we don't like it, it's still there, and the district, if they have the right to three personal days, they, they can take it.
I'm highly willing to vote against having that for vacation.
I know, but that's a new year's theme, yeah.
And I think a lot of communities in this area in particular, February is a, is a month where a lot of folks, and again, I can't run around people's vacations, but it's always a good idea. I think if the tri-valley league, for example, walked together and said, we're gonna do this, or if the, the school districts in this area said, we're gonna do this, I think we have good discussions. We've already moved towards, for example, Good Friday, if it's, we've already moved on that as a district, other districts since then have followed us, which is kind of interesting. And our attendance has been okay, it's, it's not the best day, but it's been...
But it's not a better.
Right.
What is the issue that was then not counted as a school day?
Well, there's no such thing as it doesn't count as a school day, because it's a determination where if I see, if there's something that's gone on, then I have to self-report to the Commonwealth, then the Commonwealth has the right, but regardless, then I have a contractual issue, because if they've already come into the building and they leave, I'm already counting that as a day. So then we have to go that route. And the only days you don't have to make up are any days after June first. So boiler goes on June second, you're not required by law to, to make up that day, otherwise well.
The reason why I was asking, Jen, I think March is a long month.
It's a very long one.
Yeah, and I think there's anecdotal data about sort of the higher incidence of mental health issues for children during March, which we would all sort of think December with holidays, or, you know, kind of back to school September dates would be a really high incidence of mental health. And I think what we're seeing is that March is really becoming kind of that trigger month. And I, I think anecdotally, people are saying it's because children don't have a day off in March, that they sort of look forward to vacations and breaks and different health. So the suggestion is that we would take away their vacation, I was just asking if there was, you know, maybe...
Early releases?
Yeah.
Yeah, or do something, like maybe instead of doing, I, I don't know what the, the solution is, but March is that one month in the school year that just goes on forever.
Okay, and it's also really long for our staff as well. Last year, one of our staff was here at LGN, Karen and I did March's training, and it's all about self-care and mental health awareness during the month of March, and our staff really really wants to be in it. It's absolutely something that we can look into if you are interested in perhaps having a longer weekend there. We should take a look at maybe our professional development schedule, maybe we'll make one of those use around, so...
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
We're always looking for PD.
Well, and that's something else that we've, you know, discussed about, the fact that we would love to have more than one professional development day. It's really, we do not have enough time with our staff to really get into all the things that number one, are mandates for us, or, you know, district goals, but also really targeting professional development around what the staff is interested in, and being that they're differentiated in the month. There's definitely a need for more professional development.
And March might be a nice time, then you have one in September, and then one in March.
So if you take a look at some of the high performance districts, and of course socioeconomic is an issue as well, but you'll see a lot of, every other Thursday, early release day, every other Wednesday, early release day, and it's interesting because that's when the PD is really taking place, and it's an opportunity for grade, grade level vertical and horizontal alignment to take place, it's an opportunity to put together SCL components, teaching the whole child and all that, so maybe that's something in terms of, we could take a look at and see what other, some of our staff thinks about that as well. I get back to you with it.
The other, I know I wanted to mention in regards to the school calendar, in years past, we've actually per two years at once. So if you are interested in also at the same time taking a look at a draft for twenty-one, twenty-two, how do we, we're happy to put together a few options, we can look at that as a draft as well, and then per two calendar years at the same time, or we can just simply look at twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Maybe worth just having to look at it, just to see.
Jen, I have a question.
Okay.
Maybe it's because of the fifteen years of that they're looking at.
It's one hundred percent what you're used to, and, um...
It's happier.
I like this one, I so like that.
Well, happy to roll, break back to back.
It's definitely...
Make the other one just for me.
The, the one, the one...
I can, I can live with this.
Done, check.
I'm, I can, one symbol I need, but I was, I made it up to talk to you about, is the N after all the releases, like I don't know what that looks like on the actual calendar, but like what I said, it's, it's a little bit different for me. So my kids' calendar is color-coded, I think that would be better.
Yeah, like these little kind of dot lines.
I think, I think I would...
The circle one is...
Yeah, or if you're used to the old version, I totally understand that, so.
I think if this is color-coded, it definitely needs to look there. I'll be right back. We'll run to...
I'm the only one that has problems, I'm fine.
I, I understand that. I understand that.
Okay, so there's a reason I'm not the tech director. It's many reasons I'm not the tech director. Was it here, or there? Here? It was up and ready. It has been a long time since I opened it before we started. So I just wanted to share our annual MCAS data presentation with you this evening. I know that, you know, we've always talked about the relevance of MCAS data at this point in the year. One of the biggest challenges is that we don't get our data until our students have gone home from the summer and moved on. So therefore, it's, it makes it a little bit more challenging, because our students have gone on, they've gone on to the next grade level, and the data isn't very timely. So one of the things that we've really worked on this year is finding ways to connect our end of the year MCAS results with the way that students were performing in September or October. That may give us the opportunity to catch students earlier in the year, provide more direct interventions for our students. So I apologize that I'm not super techie with this thing, but I'm working on it. I am a Google certified educator, so you would think this would not be a problem, but it is. See? I am not patient, I'm not a patient person by nature. Pressing the buttons.
Why? No way.
No way, you really don't want to. Okay, here we go. So I just wanted to provide a very brief reminder about the fact that we are no longer talking about advanced proficient needs improvement and warning. Now, we are in the next generation assessment, so we talk about students that are exceeding the expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting, and not meeting expectations. And I also wanted to show you that this is what the parent report card looks like. So I know that my daughter's in fifth grade, I recently got her parent report, and it shows you on the continuum for both math and ELA what this looks like, and it will show you what category they ranked in and their actual score. It will show you their score in comparison to their peers within their school. If there is more than one K to five school, or for example at LGN, we have LGN and JCS, it will show you compared to the district, and then it will also show you compared to the state. And then at the bottom of the parent report, it actually gives some specific examples of strengths and weaknesses of that particular assessment. I think the longest part of my presentation tonight is going to be waiting for the slides to transition, because I did not, I did not give you guys a lot this year. All right. So very quickly, district and school accountability, North Public Schools is considered a district that does not require any assistance or intervention at this time, which is always what we love to hear, because it means that we are still making adequate progress. Also, within that realm, all five of our schools were also ranked as not needing assistance or intervention at that time, at this time. However, within each school, we had, for example, the Yale School was ranked as making significant progress towards their goals, which is a little bit more than just making progress towards their goals. So each school had a little bit of a different there. The Yale School is the only one to have that significant progress, which is nice to see And usually what I do is I give you a whole bunch of numbers. I have not done that this year. What I decided to do instead was take each of our groups and give you some very overview ideas about strengths of the assessment within that grade span, and then also opportunities for us to improve. And then I have included directly from the building principals themselves, their action plans on things that they're doing throughout the school year in order to provide students with direct interventions based on their need, and look at specific curriculum items as well. So at the elementary level, this really takes both LGN and JCS, as well as the Yale School into consideration. A couple very quick highlights for you. Dr. B mentioned earlier absenteeism, and how that's an accountability measure for us. The Department of Education looks at students that are chronically absent, and when I think about chronically absent, I think of like students that have missed twenty, thirty days of school. That is not their version of chronically absent. Their version of chronically absent is a student that has missed ten percent or more of their days in attendance. So a student that's with us for the entire one hundred and eighty school days, eighteen days or more. So your child has the flu, you go to Disney, and before you know it, you're very close to that eighteen days. If a student moves in in the middle of the school year, they're only here for ninety days, then it's nine, it's nine days, with literally ten percent of their days enrolled. We've had a lot of conversations about the issue around chronically absent, making sure that we're reaching out to families when students are approaching that ten percent. So if we've been in school for fifty days and we have a student that's already been out for seven, we need to be reaching out to that family and really working on getting that child here. So that was a strength for us, that number has gone down. Third grade at LGN had a fantastic year, especially when you're looking at the constructed response. So that's where students are responding in writing to a prompt for ELA, especially because it was our third graders, it was the very first time they took this assessment online. And when you think about our eight and nine-year-old third graders typing those responses, they did a fantastic job, and they were well above the state average in that area. And then fifth grade at the Yale School absolutely knocked it out of the park, very, very, did very well in ELA across the board, outranked the state average by up to twenty points in most areas. Couple opportunities for K to five, or really K to five, because it is the job of all of our, of our teachers, is looking at specifically at fractions and number cents, and then also we continue to have a very wide discrepancy between student performance at JCS and student performance at LGN. And I want to have some very serious conversations about curriculum alignment and what instruction looks like in the classrooms, because there is definitely a difference that's happening, and I don't think we can blame it on subgroups. So that's a conversation that we need to have. So our elementary action plan for JCS and LGN, it's coming. One of the things we're really fortunate to have this year is we have both a math coach and a literacy coach that are very, very actively engaged with our grade level teachers in K to five, and specifically K to three, looking at data, looking at students that are needing interventions at an early age, and helping our, our grade level teachers to design interventions that are really targeting those students right away. We also recently adopted a new literacy assessment called the BAS, all students were assessed with that during the first few weeks of school. And we've also done, started implementing the Panorama Student Success Platform, so that we were taking and looking at all of our student data at, at the same place. So we're looking at, you know, during our PLC meetings, and then also, one of the things we've done is we have a low... things we've done is we have a local assessment called STAR, and we were able to create a correlation from our last year's students of, students that ranked in this particular area during September STAR were more likely to be ranked as meeting or exceeding expectations. So we applied that same formula to our current third, fourth, and fifth graders, and are hoping to reach those students that need interventions earlier on this year. At the Yale School. All right. Um, really working hard with our literacy coach and our literacy consultant this year to integrate their reading and writing units of study. We have also integrated the social studies standards into reading and writing this year to really provide students with a deeper learning experience, um, and also giving our teachers more time to actually teach literacy, because they don't have to stop and now teach social studies. Integrated very, very well. Um, we also talked about the BAS assessment, um, and looking at interventions there. We don't have as tight of a system for interventions at the Yale School, so we're working on bulking that up. Um, and also looking at specific standards in math that requires some, some more direct instruction. Middle school, across all of our subgroups, when you think about special education, high needs students, economically disadvantaged, grade increases across the board in ELA. Our grade science scores went up by about twenty percentage points, which was awesome over the year before. And one of the things that we did differently is we really, really focused on our curriculum. We focused on curriculum alignment, we purchased them a new resource that was aligned to the standards. They hadn't had anything new at the middle school in many, many years. So we were happy to see that even in its first year, it was giving us some dividends. Um, some challenges there were chronic absenteeism in regards to our students that weren't coming to school. Um, and then specifically looking at statistics and probability in grade six and seven, that was an area we were really weak, and we thought that using some of our project-based learning classes would be a great opportunity for us to do some more of that work. Kids really like learning about statistics and probability when you equate it to baseball. Yeah, something else besides boring things. So middle school, really using our ICE block to address individual needs of students, using the Panorama Student Success Platform. They are so deep in that work already, the middle school is absolutely loving having that platform to take a look at student grades, the way that they're trending on a daily basis, um, and really looking at behavior and chronic absenteeism, seeing how all of those things integrate. Um, and then also working on constructive responses, um, and building principles really involved in supporting the teachers with formative assessments as well. So for our high school, this is the very first year of the new next generation assessment for our tenth graders. It was the first time they took the assessment on the computers, and Karen and I were there for the whole thing, and it was so interesting, because the students had done it before in eighth grade, but the teachers hadn't. So it was more of a learning curve for our teachers and our staff than it really it was for our students. So um, in the past, we have always talked about the two forty, or the, was the magic number for our students to graduate. The numbers have all changed, the next generation assessment. Um, for ELA, our students need a score of four seventy-two, and for math, they need a score of four eighty-six. It's no longer a number that you can just keep in the top of your head. I had to look it up like three times in order to actually put it on the slide for you guys tonight. So for classes of twenty-one and twenty-two, that's our current sophomores and juniors, um, this is their requirements. Our seniors, you guys are all set, you already have the old legacy, M-Pass the two forty. And then science, because they have not made the adjustment yet, um, it's still the two twenty. So when you look at our high school data, it looks a little bit scarier than what we're used to, right? We're used to seeing ninety-eight percent of our students that are considered advanced or proficient, and this data does not show that. This is a brand, oops, sorry, I went too far. This is a brand new assessment. Um, so this is our first year of baseline data for these, for these students, but when you actually look at the correlation, the number of students that hit that four eighty-six, and of course, I don't remember what it was, because it's gone down, um, it's the same number of students. You still have ninety-eight percent of students that are going to be able to graduate on that first try. Um, but it is a very, very different visual representation when you're looking at that. And it looks, honestly, when I looked at it for the first time, I panicked a little bit, like, oh my gosh, we went from ninety-eight percent to sixty-three percent. But when you look at the correlation, it's actually very, very similar. Um, high school action plan, um, first go with this for Ethan and Amy. One of the things they're really, really doing at the high school is working to integrate the Twenty First Century Skills, the Portrait of a Graduate, all into their curriculum maps. Um, taking a look at really explicitly um, teaching the social emotional learning frameworks, supporting students through some of the anxiety and other SEL issues. Um, also looking at really developing interventions at the high school and um, you know, looking at their student data, because of the structure of the schedule, there's really not a lot of opportunity to provide students with flexible intervention. So where you do a six-week session with a student that may need support in mathematics, and then they are able to release them back, like we do at the elementary school and even the middle schools during the ICE block, the high school does not have that structure currently in place. All we have is the twenty-two-minute Lancer Learning Block, which is really not enough time to get, to have students come down, provide them with an intervention, and then send them back. It's just, so we're really looking at the structure of how we can provide some interventions to our students that are struggling. Um, and they also took a look at remediation and personalized learning, um, and also the physics curriculum was our very first year of implementing that as a tested subject, so taking a look at the alignment and maybe where did we miss fire that first year. That's it. So as I promised, not a ton of data for you guys tonight, but more of an action plan moving forward. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. You're very welcome.
Sorry, do you think this plan is to bait my existence in every time we're talking? I feel like something just changes itself and it doesn't mean what I want it to. Um, so I have the preference to the cell errors and the change by annual needs by annually, so we're reviewing.
So the one that's there, happy we get rid of.
Um, you also, at our last meeting, had asked us to take a look at reporting, reporting by staff on page ten. So we did change some language there, or actually added some language there, related to if staff do not report as they're required to, and that they need to implement according to the contract. And then on page eleven, we also looked at the language initially said, basically assumed that they were fully prior to the investigation happening, so we cleared that up a little bit, stating the responsibilities of notifying parents prior to the investigation starting. I can't go through the only two changes that you would ask for, so we'll clear that.
Because the regulations speak very clearly to students or staff who want the principal, but it's, it's kind of up in the air when it goes to the superintendent. If action goes to you guys, as a school, potentially you designated, for example, this is superintendent, or if it's this big issue, you actually designated to council.
It's screaming out.
Well, accusations are made all the time.
Well, and I think the other piece is how, in that kind of a situation, how this district has already set up our protocol, because another district might not set it up the same way.
So we have a motion to approve a full intervention and intervention. Seven. And on to favor.
It'll be nice to get that out.
What if you guys have a different?
Yeah.
Oh, before we start, I really like how this says the general immediate date. That makes a huge difference, and I really appreciate that.
That's a big change from the October report. If we organize, so the per person pages are adjusted, and so it's not part of the report that we handed out by major need, so somebody for general, and last day, we discovered it was a special item for the entirety of the budget. Um, the other big change on this one versus the October, we have balances on salaries. So all those are balanced reconciled at this point in time. We have, you know, you look through here, you'll see there are some negative balances. Majority of those are school choice funds, and we don't have the revenue that I live in yet, so we made these standards early in the year, so the incorporation budget, we don't have to. So we have any questions? Have you looked through it? Feel free to comment.
Uh, we handed out a second report, I did today, is the year-to-date revolving fund. Similar effects, I've done this in the past with the bank, pre-ex due, so this is current balance of revolving fund. Again, if you have any questions, we'll jump out and we can contact.
So that the committee knows, through item Matt or myself, I think it's something we covered, this is shared with the chair of finance, and this is urgent to share with this.
The parking lot landing installation at the high school? Is that at the back?
That would be, oh.
Any questions? Onto others.
Thank you, just two items that I want to bring up. Um, the athletic study committee report on the twentieth, it's up DM, and on high school, I asked folks to come out for your input, constructive criticism, thoughts, et cetera, join us, we'll have folks there. Um, the second item is, you can see tonight is draft, can read the yearbook, it's a draft only, so if you think there's something missing there, or you want to change something, this is the time to do it, because we're ready to go to the churches, and this, and this will be, yep, this will be sent to every home in visiting in town. Yeah, and it's our first time, I think they have a thing you could do with it, it'll be ready to keep it to sixteen pages. And this will be mailed to, at the cost of school choice funds. One time cost, I believe it's sixty, a little over six thousand, I can't remember, but this is not a thing we first to try to tell the story, something that we've been thinking about doing for a long time, something that we do one, one time a year, and something that we would try to control if you go the communication into the thing, so feel free to criticize again, add to it as much as you will. I didn't want to put the picture of the school committee in there, but I was up for it. Just kidding. You wanted to cover.
Um, the athletic conquest on the twentieth, that's on the Sunday in high school.
Yeah, that's at high school, yeah. I'll, I'll send out another one. And I, I just want to, I note early today, I made it real quick with the students when they were here about that situation. You know, it's, it's, I have to continue to learn every day, coming up on fifty-one years a day, twenty-eight years of the industry, that everything's changed because of social media. I think it's unfortunate. But I, I do think that I have an administration and, and a staff that is trying to find the best way to deal with the number one public health issue for teenagers around the country. This is our opioid addiction. This is our, God forbid that comes down for our loved ones, but this is our. And so we're not shutting down bathrooms for the rest of the year. What we're trying to do is implement a plan where, where we have limited resources, and we're trying to find creative ways, because our kids are crying out to not want to be in a bathroom. I sat with fourteen students the other day, my staff knows this, my student advisory group, which consists predominantly of high school students and one student, we from grade six, seven, and eight. And it was very clear to me, when a student says, Dr. B, we've got to find a way to stop this stuff. I don't want to go into a bathroom to go through what I need to do and be accused of vaping, and I don't vape, I'm an athlete, I don't get into it, I never smoked, blah, 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 and I can tell you I believe there a hundred percent. And this is not necessarily an A and B student, a National Society student, although this student wasn't very good student. The fact of the matter is our kids are tired of this. We act as the parents to the best of our ability when they come to our schools, to the best of our ability. Seven hundred and twenty-five days, every day, our staff is doing duties that are being flexible. Workless, please? That's all we ask. Complain, break. But accusations? I got two emails from two students that went to myself, the principal, and the assistant president. Some of our parents should be those either, because it was done the right way, it was done with respect, it was questioning, it came with ideas and thoughts. And we acted on it tonight, tomorrow we will go to two more bathrooms, we're going to bring in some subs to help us support the checking in and checking out and alleviate some of these concerns. But you know what, I never thought I'd say this, but I've come to the point in my career where some of the Facebook stuff, if not most of it, is in one ear and not the other. Talk to me, call us, complain, come to us with an idea. The number one thing I used to say when I was a high school principal was, don't just complain, complain and have an idea. If you complain and have an idea, we will work with you. We're working with the filthy commissioner now, who has emailed me, notifying me that I have to do certain things because he got a complaint from one parent. That parent and I, I received an email from that parent after he filed a complaint, which is fine. I asked him to be with us for a few days until he finally figured out, he was very understanding. That's what we're going to do this weekend to resolve this issue and come back with a better plan. I want to show you a couple things before we go. The high school has been working as an administration staff with students on the following posters, student-created PSAs, student resources, student video screens, Google sites, assemblies and speakers, hidden plate site, bloodless curriculum, science classroom modules on addiction and effects of vaping, teacher resources of vaping lessons, LLVU modules, which are coming soon, science class modules on addiction and effects of vaping, and then vaping detectors, which we are currently going to be getting and placing at the high school. And I teach us to change this schedule to have thirty-minute duties, doing resource duties, like we were back in the day with smoking and vaping, as a way to target the number one crisis that we have with teenagers in this country, not just in normal, in this country. And it can happen to anybody, you know, all, all of us know this. So I'm not trying to parent, I'm not trying to tell you how to parent the kids, I'm just trying to say, please, please work with us. Normal public schools have been recognized and leading the state with partners on a fifty thousand dollar grant on anti-vaping, with the number one school system in the state that's involved, that thanks to our partners, getting a fifty thousand dollar grant, public-sized access, many of you know. Um, but I ask, please work with us, we are trying really hard to do great things. Any student that has medical issues, be a priority, any student that has, that's being taken here. We want to do the right thing for kids, I want to do it for all the kids, we want to stop the kids that are hopefully not getting addicted, but are using it, and we want to make sure that the kids that aren't addicted on it are accused of doing it, and they didn't even touch it. That's what I'm asking this to do, and thank you to those who have supported us and those that are criticizing us, please come forward with some ways for us to help resolve the issue. Thank you.
I think, I just want to say to some of the parents who are criticizing, mostly on Facebook, I, I just want to remind them that the priority of all of you and the school committee has always been first and foremost, student safety. It always has been and will continue to be, and I, I wish that parents, instead of looking at it as we're taking away rights of their kids, is that we're trying to set rules and expectations to help keep their kids safe. Um, you know, parents, I don't think realize what goes on in a high school. It's very different than we do in high school. And so I think that a little bit of trust, that we are doing the best to try to help all of our kids stay safe, be able to use the bathroom when they really need to, and not have kids afraid to go in there because they're being caught, um, you know, for somebody else who may need to be there.
It's my number one concern, the idea that we're blaming kids who have nothing to do with it. with it.
It's not fair.
And that's what happens in some places.
Right.
And that's wrong.
Agreed. I just don't think parents realize what is happening inside the schools. I think we just see this and think, oh my god, my kid's rights are being taken away. That is not at all what we're doing. And I personally 100% support the administration team and the principal and the assistant principal for all their efforts to try to keep our kids safe and healthy. It does take a village and we are really focused on that.
I talked to Vinnie over the summer when I talked to all the principals and he said he was going to take our, not as before Governor Baker and all that happened. He didn't want middle school to be, well, middle school is where they, is where they start. And he said he was drawing our line of not in here. Whatever you do out there, you keep it out there, you're not bringing it in.
Well, I think one of the things that maybe we can verify, I don't know exactly who the policy is, but one of the concerns that parents have been commenting on social media is kind of the lack of punishment, I guess, lack for better word. But I think that we know, there have been children who have been caught and who have been suspended. So I think it's really important that it's public knowledge that we have administrators who are absolutely following through to what the expectation is, that it's a policy, we have spent time talking about it, it's a policy that is being enacted and that children are absolutely being held accountable, that we have had to suspend children for vaping. And there were comments on Facebook that said, just suspend them. I think a lot of people use the word expelled. That's a very different concept. And there are laws, there's laws about what you can do. We've talked a lot about.
Chapter 222 requires progressive discipline, parental involvement. It requires to try alternative means beyond taking the education away. And that's what we have to work with. And that's what we want to do. I don't know any kid from high school, and I'm trying to be 51, class of 88. I don't know anybody who was smoking in the boys' room, who stopped smoking because they got suspended from school day after day after day after day after day. It does not work. It is not a solution. What is a solution is, yes, you have to do that at times. You got to get to progressive discipline. But we are trying to find other ways to be creative to support. Our student leadership has been fantastic with this. I mean, our kids are really, and I know I have two of them down at the end, who are actively engaged and trying to do the right thing. And I know they're frustrated with us, as the adults with this stuff, because I've been talking to students. But it's a process and we're going to get to a good place. I know we always do one, we always get to the right place. And, you know, I'll defer to comments from you guys as student leaders down there and what you're hearing and frustration you may, you know, have, and I don't want to do on the spot, as you know, too, if you can always say whatever you want to say. Thank you.
We can put you on the agenda at the next meeting. That would be great. Thanks in advance.
I think it's really, I think we all know that adults can be very frustrated. I think, you know, we really do understand that, but there's this concern about children, about students who are coming and complaining that they can't simply use the bathroom because we know that other kids are needing in the bathroom. They're texting, they're bringing their lunches into the bathroom so that they can sort of sit together and eat their lunches in the bathroom. This is, it's not fair for children, for students, excuse me, high school students to not be able to walk into the bathroom free of that concern of a congregation of their classmates enjoying their lunch and some vaping. It just isn't appropriate. So we're not putting you on the spot, but if you have a comment or suggestions.
No, not suggestions, but like, the majority of students, we are not mad at the staff and adults. We understand where the problem is coming from. That's who we're most angry with. And like, I'm constantly, you know, it has been, the bathroom has been taught and everybody is a little upset about it. Everybody's going to be really happy with the opening tomorrow, we've already texted through chat and everybody's already, you know, I feel my phone buzzing. So, you know, happy stuff there. But anytime we're talking about it, it's not, you know, oh, I can't believe the principals did this, or, you know, I can't believe we're having to do this now because of the staff. We all know where the problems are originating from. I apologize on behalf of a minority.
You know what, I don't want you to, thank you for that, but I really think it's about, it's about a learning curve. Three people in the state I've got. We have the first double one transplant in history of the United States over, just happened last year.
Teenager.
Teenager, 17 years old. This is our opioid addiction. I hope to never see opioid in our schools, but maybe I'm always saying that out loud and I apologize for that, but what I need, Brad, is I'm concerned about the addiction of this stuff and what it is for kids. And for some kids, addiction can come like this, and for some kids, they can do something once in a while, and I get that, but I'm concerned in what that means for kids. And I don't think any kid who just wants to go to use the bathroom should be stressed about having to potentially be in the same place with someone else who is and have to then face the wrath of potentially being abused. That is, darn it, that's the last thing I want to see. So we will find a way to help to educate students. And by the way, they're all great kids. One high school's been a great place, you all know how I feel about it. But I wish that we just had some folks just saying, okay, I don't agree with it, let's see if this is what's going to happen for the next three days or four days or 10 weeks. We would never just do this for the next 10 or 12 weeks. We just work it because it's not feasible for us. It's like, we've had enough because our kids are safe and we've had enough. And I know the adults are trying to, so I appreciate your comments.
If I could just say one thing, last year we did have, Dr. Hartman came in and did a whole presentation for the students. And he has been fighting sort of this vaping epidemic for years. And I was fortunate enough to be at one of his presentations. And I think if you see somebody who is as passionate as him, you know, Google him, look online, he clearly sent a message of how scary and how addictive vaping is. And I forget exactly how he did it, but he, I think, asked a question, something like, I won't ask you if you vape, but does anybody here vape? And a lot of the students kind of giggled and laughed. I mean, we know that it's happening. And he really tried to get the students to recognize the severity of that choice. And I don't know if they really, if students can understand it at their age, given sort of their development, but it's pretty scary. And if any adult sat and saw him do that presentation, I think we all would have felt as anxious about it as we still do today when we have students who continue to be at high levels, so.
I think our SRO, Jacob, said it best when he, so I think at that presentation, that this generation is going to be a generation of kids or, you know, adults pulling oxygen tanks behind them. I mean, that's how serious it is. It's scary.
I just have one last thing, a little plug to lighten the mood a little bit. Need, the E organization, which helps all of our schools and all of our teachers, they have some really exciting news with their grants this year, but I'm going to let them share that with you. But to plug them, they are doing a $25 raffle to win dinner anywhere in the world up to $4,000. The package includes flights, a hotel, a meal to the destination of your choice. The grand prize winner and the second or third prizes will be drawn on April 3rd. They are having a little bit of a problem selling their tickets because there is some rule or regulation with this that they cannot sell to any family members. And when they say family members, they mean parents, sisters, brothers, aunts, uncles. So that's really trying to take me away a big part of who they sell their stuff to. So if anybody can reach out to them and buy a raffle ticket, the raffle ticket's $25 and who knows, you could have dinner in Greece.
Talk to my list.
Hey. Anything else?
No.
Alright, so, what's your agenda?
Second.
Governor, anyway.